Good morning and happy Saint Patrick's Day. I'm out of block Chair of the Needham Planning Board and planning forum, I call this meeting to order. This meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a hybrid manner with current state regulations and is being recorded. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on town's website at needhamma.gov. Our first order of business before us is a discussion to resolve the articles that we have for May Town Meeting. Do we take the easiest one first? Does anybody have any comments or questions? For about the corrective zoning measures? Paul, Jean. Okay, so. I think it was Article three. I mean, I don't. Lee, that's correct, right? Because that was not included in our packet.
Oh, it was included, it should have been included in your packet, the technical changes.
Article.
The other one, what are you looking for?
The other one is.
It's Article three.
I have it here.
Right, okay, good, so. So we have no comments, so we're resolved, do we mean, should we take an individual vote on each of the articles?
Yes.
Okay, so can I have a motion to approve Article three as written?
I move that we approve Article three as written and send it to the warrant committee.
Well, I think, I think the motion has to be to recommend to Town Meeting the approval of Article three as drafted.
Well, I think at this point, aren't we just sending it to the warrant committee?
No, you're, no, at this point, you're making your recommendation for the warrant on the article and to Town Meeting, so you're voting your recommendation on the article.
But it's already going into the warrant without our asking the warrant committee to put it in.
Yes, we've already, we've already done that, we did that at the first stage when we held a hearing. It's, it's already on the warrant, so you're making your recommendation to Town Meeting on the article itself.
We've got, we've got other warrant articles here that are totally different than what, what has been sent to the warrant committee, because we've totally redrafted.
Yes. Yes, and so you're, you're recommending the article in the form that is in currently to Town Meeting.
And these, but these are the forms that are going to be printed in the, in the.
In the warrant, so in the warrant, it's going to be printed as you're voting it today.
And without our making a motion and voting to send it to the warrant in this form.
That's correct.
I'm sorry, I cut you off, Lee.
Yes.
I think we have, I think, I think we have to vote to adopt this and ask the warrant committee to publish it in the warrant as we're, as we're presenting it today, otherwise they've got what we sent them two weeks ago or a month ago.
Ian make a recommendation.
And then we have a separate vote on the question.
You could do it that way. You could do it that way, if you feel more comfortable doing it that way, it's fine.
I move that we send Article three, amend zoning by law, corrective zoning amendments as drafted to the warrant committee for inclusion in the May meeting warrant and that we vote to recommend to Town Meeting that they adopt it as drafted.
I can.
We have a motion by Paul Alpert, we have a second by Natasha Spata. Any discussion, hearing none will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
I.
Artie Crocker.
Natasha Spata.
Hi.
Jean McKnight.
I.
The Chair votes aye, we've disposed of Article three. Let's take up the three car garage. As to the change itself. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
The final, the final wording that was distributed.
Yes. One regarding three car garages. Lee, I have a separate note which I'll send to you about the explanation, but it's.
Sure.
So I move that we send Article one, amend zoning by law accessory three car garage use and single family residence be general residence, business and industrial districts, to the warrant committee for inclusion in the annual Town Meeting warrant and that we recommend Town Meeting that it be adopted.
I have a motion by Paul Alpert, a second by. By Artie Crocker, any discussion, hearing none will come to the vote. Paul Alpert.
Aye.
Artie Crocker. Natasha, Natasha Spata.
Aye.
Jean McKnight.
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye, we disposed of Article one, thank you. Then I just realized that if we're all physically present, we don't have to do a roll call. I, let us move now to Article four. Article four is to amend the zoning by law, single residence be in general residence side setback. And there has been some back and forth with Lee with some additional corrective language. Dave, have you seen? Must have seen the, the latest, the absolute latest, right?
Yeah, so like we said before, it now kind of says it twice in the bylaw that after, after thirty-two feet, it has to have a two-foot jog regardless of how far away from the property line it was, and that was a problem where it was originally drafted. Because if they weren't at the fourteen feet, they felt that they didn't have to abide by the bylaw, so.
If they were at sixteen feet, they could have about fifty feet of side.
Right.
Yeah, well, or whatever.
Yeah, exactly, they could be, that's right.
So this, this clears that up, and I think it says it twice in there, which is good, so it should be fine, thank you for that language change. Drafted some of that.
Yes.
And then for the record, this is Dave Roger, Village Commissioner. So does anyone else have any comments? Jean, thanks for your suggested additional revision, I'm sorry for swinging your net.
I'm very happy with it the way it is now.
Would you be more comfortable to sit over here?
I'm doing fine.
I would have a chair, Jean, seriously, just level a chair or something like that. Remove the chair or something.
All right. She's got. There you go, swing the chair. So I, we don't have any other comments, do we, on Article four then? So seeing no other comments, we'd kind of like to make a motion.
Yes, so I move that we send Article four, amend zoning by law, single residence be in general residence side setback as presently drafted and sent to us yesterday to the warrant committee for inclusion in the, in the annual Town Meeting warrant and that we recommend to Town Meeting that it be adopted.
We have a motion by Paul Alpert, a second by.
Second.
By Natasha Spata, any discussion, hearing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay, I, I don't need to say, I don't need the Chair to say, nay. The motion is unanimously approved, Article four is passed and moving on to Town Meeting as written. Thank you all very much, now comes finally Article two with respect to amending the zoning by law for accessory dwelling units. The most recent suggested changes are highlighted in red as Lee has sent it out. In particular, I'll call out a few policy items for us just to be sure this is what we are in fact resolving. Under Article, under subsection two B, we're now allowing for an adult employed by an owner to provide childcare to one or more of the owner's family members, which is to say, if you have a child caregiver, which was excluded previously, it's now included, does anyone have any comments about that, any opposition? Excellent, then with respect to the ability to lease it out, the E D U, we were referring to, or the, or the primary dwelling unit. We initially had a minimum term of twelve months, but we've since resolved to reduce it to six months. This is paragraph three E, does anyone have any comments about that?
No, I think it makes perfect sense because the fact that right now in town, there are people that can rent out rooms, they rent out, they can't, can't, but they rent out rooms all the time in town and they whether it be at will or some type of lease or something, they're, they're doing something, so this is a, just a continuation of that inside the main dwelling, so.
Right.
That makes perfect sense.
I mean, we're just trying to avoid things like that, but I think six months is long enough.
Lee, in six F, I noticed there was, you added an addition lang, additional language about this proper disposal of stormwater. I don't recall seeing that in previous versions, but it was probably.
In the version that we initially had in front of hearing, because that was something that I pointed out to Lee.
Okay, good, okay. I didn't, I didn't focus on it, and suddenly now I did. One, so that's with respect to six F, with regard to six C, where we state that the total occupancy is limited to five persons who are not family of the owner. Should we set out a limit for the E D U as a one-bedroom unit? How many, what the occupancy capacity should be?
If it's, if it's one bedroom, maybe how many people?
Unless you're a college student.
Well, that's what I was.
Then you put bunk beds.
And then, you know, you have bunk beds, or you, and you can get a thousand dollars a bed and four thousand dollars a unit as.
Okay. You know, there are practical elements.
That are self-limiting, yeah. Okay. All right.
I mean, we, we may get some pushback at Town Meeting related to that part of it. Five individuals unrelated, because then you could have one owner in the main and four people in the E D U or something like that, so.
Well, it's actually, I think you could, it's more than that, right?
Well, if there's five hundred, up to five hundred.
You're gonna, you're gonna have five people living in the house.
Yeah.
And then an addition of five.
Five people living.
I'm sorry, this.
No, no, it's five total.
It depends, it depends on whether they're family members, we're saying there's limit, five non-family members in the entire property.
So the five non-family members could be in the E D U.
Primary dwelling. Yeah, you're gonna have five non-related individuals.
In the E D U.
In the E D U.
Yeah.
If they can squeeze in.
Right. So that's why, but Dave, today the joint is a self-limiting.
Because it says occupancy of the unit, it doesn't say occupancy of the entire lot.
I don't really why, no way it has to say five, honestly, because even in the house, it's, it's gonna be one bedroom dedicated to that.
Yes.
So, right. You know, certainly could be less than five.
I, I think the reason we use five is elsewhere in our bylaw, we have a limitation of five unrelated persons.
That is a result of that, of a health standard or anything?
Um, I, I, it might just be that we, we just don't want a bunch of unrelated people living together, each one of each, presumably being adults and having their own car. I don't know exactly the reason, but we're matching that.
Yeah.
We're saying, this isn't any different from any other simple family home, but, but you can't have more than five unrelated people living here.
I think this is apparently common with other municipalities to limit, to avoid like rooming houses.
It does say, provided that the occupancy of the principal dwelling unit and the E D U combined
Yeah.
shall be limited to five persons who are not family of the owner. So it's five people in addition to the family of the owner.
Correct, that's what I'm saying, exactly.
That's correct, that's, that's the way it's drafted.
Well, I can be, keep, keep in mind if the, if the detached structure E D U goes to Town Meeting, if the detached structure is voted at Town Meeting in the form, that means a detached structure could have five unrelated people living in.
But you can also have it attached, five people living.
That's not the point, I'm talking about the detached right now, the detached could be five unrelated people living in the unit.
The, yeah.
According to this, yes.
Correct, that's what this is saying.
Yeah, but it's, it's not, this is not, this is for both an attached and a detached.
Correct, and I'm talking about detached right now.
And this, this applies to the whole building.
Correct.
A D U and principal dwelling unit combined, so if, if the owner's unit has unrelated people living there like then, that means the E D U can have fewer unrelated people, because
There's five.
With the owner, the, the owner's partner, you might say, or.
Right. Right, okay.
Yeah, yeah, well, it's not okay, we're, I mean, we're talking about the fact that, you know, if it goes, if it's voted affirmative, as far as sometimes people don't always catch the nuances here and there, the reality is it could be five unrelated people, not that it's going to.
Legally, we can, but we're, we're having the discussion that you've got nine hundred square feet and one bedroom.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm stumped, but I understand that, but the nuances. I understand that.
It's gonna be very difficult for five college students to squeeze into that unit.
I, I.
As I said before, kidding Lee, and I'm still kidding.
I agree. I, you know, I mean, I, I do not disagree with that, that, that psychological scenario. But the fact, but the fact is that, the fact is that this is says that they can't.
But remember also, people that have temporary, like, like the flight attendants in that, in that unit, right? Like, there were five people that were rotating in and out.
But no more, no more than five.
No, we've got.
I just want to make sure that we're all.
We've got a limit in, in here, that if you're renting out a unit, the only people who can live in the unit are the lessee and the lessees family. Now, who's gonna be the lessee on, on a lease for rotating flight attendants?
Yeah, I think you're probably gonna get college students more than flight attendants, but I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, the five college students who can't afford might live there, so if we're okay, we're okay with that, I just want to make sure that.
We're lined up with two or three college students. And the only problem with that is, is parking, because if five college students have five vehicles and they're trying to cock that on residential property with the owner of the vehicle as well, that's where we get complaints. Because a guy's gonna park on the street, they park on the lawn.
Which is why. And we.
No, that's correct.
We do, and we, that's right, we do have a provision in here that requires all parking needs to be accommodated on site. Off-street parking grounds, but to Artie's point, you're saying that if I park my car in the front lawn, people are getting complaints, or people are complaining to you about that?
Yeah, I mean, I had a house that was rented to, to own students, and there was about six or seven cars on the driveway, on the lawn and everything, and the neighbor complained about it. I, I called the owner of the property and said, listen, that's a single-family house.
Right.
You cannot rent it to non-family members, you want to rent the house to a family, yeah, I have no issue with that, but you can't rent it to seven college kids. They're not family, they're not related together. It's very weak, but it worked, you got them out of there and you rented it to a family, but that was the complaint I was getting.
Right.
Aside from, you know, they're out on the back porch, you know, having a good time at night, and shit they grow on, and, you know, doing what college kids do, but it was mostly the parking issue. Because it was on a small cul-de-sac and there was a lot of guys that.
So I raised this because I think, as already said, it will come up, you know, at Town Meeting. And so now would be our opportunity, if we wanted to limit with respect to the number of people in the E D U.
Could we limit the amount of cars rather than the amount of people? Right, could we say with the maximum?
We have a minimum number of cars, we're requiring at least one parking space per, per unit.
No, per.
And so the parking then would be related to that, so you could only get one additional car, even if you're five people.
We're requiring, we're requiring an additional parking space.
We're not setting a limit.
We also do have a provision in here, which is similar to the regular bylaw, says you have to provide for off-street parking.
Unless we also, unless we change it to say something like, you know, on a paved surface or gravelled surface, in other words, and not on a seeded lawn or not on a lawn or something.
I, I want me to get that, I mean, I personally think that three's the number.
Okay.
It's, it's a, it's a husband and wife, and maybe I got a pull-out couch if another family member comes in business, something like that, I don't think, I think five were actually asking for problems.
Okay.
So.
Five what, people?
Five, five people in a, the assumption that five people can be in any.
In a nine hundred square foot.
Yeah. I'd like to personally see it at three, like I said, it would be a couple or whatever, and if they had a pull-out couch, that somebody could stay over.
Right.
But we don't want, you know, five unrelated people sitting up the cots all over the inside.
Yeah, so.
I feel comfortable with that.
I don't, where do we put that?
I think we say where we were talking about.
C, sixteen.
At six C, where we say five, we limit to three.
But it's probably.
Six D, size of the E D U can be limited to nine hundred square feet of living space.
C, 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 C.
C, okay, occupancy of the unit that is not owner occupied shall be limited to a number or members of the owner's family or caregiver and such caregiver's family. Let's see, right, occupancy of the principal. Provided that occupancy of the principal dwelling and the E D U combined shall be limited to five persons, and then comma, and the occupancy of the E D U shall, shall be limited to three persons.
Why don't we just, and the E D U combined, yeah, should be limited to.
So we keep, we keep the five non-related people maximum for the entire property, don't take that out.
As occupants.
And the and the occupancy of the E D U shall be limited to three persons.
I'm okay with that, because what that says is that if you have caretakers for someone that's, that are unrelated in the main house, you can still have additional people on the, on the lot. Okay.
And it says, yeah, or caregiver and such caregiver's family, you know.
Dave, right now, so, I mean, technically, right now, in someone's house, they're living there, they can have people living with them that are unrelated, and what restrictions do, can we even impose on that? It's their house, they can.
We already have a bylaw.
That says how many?
We have a general bylaw that Jean pointed out, that says you can only have five unrelated people.
Correct, so.
Correction on that, it actually says this, in the definition of family, and it allows or not more than three unrelated individuals per dwelling unit living as a single housekeeping unit, then has says, the Board of Appeals may issue a special permit to two additional individuals.
That's okay.
So it's only five by special permit, otherwise it's three.
Does that mean that we have to make this change, or that's only, it refers to the definition of family?
Yes.
That doesn't refer to the definition of occupancy?
I think you should change it here, to what Paul recommended.
Well, I, I think it's good to have something for clarity in, and not just copy.
But also.
Because this would allow six, because each dwelling unit, I think we can get in general, we'll copy this.
Right, okay, Artie, go ahead.
On the, the change, I understand why you're saying that, Paul, but if we're, but if we're, if we're combining the main household with the E D U as far as total, then it's, then it sounds like getting into a, we're getting into a little issue there, because now we're saying, is, we're kind of, I think we're kind of in a just like, okay, the three is at E D U, but if we're, then, but if then we're saying five maximum unrelated people total between the two.
Right, because they can live in the main house.
No, I understand that, but then we're saying, if there's three unrelated in the E D U, that means only two can be, only two can be in the main house, isn't that what we're saying, just that?
What will probably happen in that situation, if you've got a caregiver who has a larger family, is, is that the owner's gonna move into the E D U.
And the caregiver.
Caregiver and having a larger family, which we're allowing up to five unrelated unrelated people can live in the main house, I've got no problem with that.
No, and I understand that scenario type, I guess what I'm saying is, do we, do we have to talk about the main dwelling in this part of it? What, do we have to, as opposed to just saying in the.
No, because we're saying we're allowing that.
No, I'm saying, but why do we have to talk about the combination of the main dwelling, since that's covered, that's already covered the main dwelling, why are we just talking about the E D U can have?
Just the unit.
Yeah, no, maximum no more than three unrelated people, why do we have to combine it with the total of the main house, when that already has, and it's individual by law taking care of it?
So therefore, in the primary house, you can still have the caregiver's family?
Dave, do you think that we have to reference our definition in section one?
That's only.
Well, it's a definition of family, but it expounds on it and says that you cannot have more than three unrelated people living at the property or up to five with special permit.
Per dwelling unit.
Per dwelling unit, now we've got some dwelling units on this property.
We're talking about a standard two-bedroom, so ready with that.
No, I think, you're like, we need to, we need to keep it this way, that's a, we have two, two dwelling units on the property. So that would, that, that would.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we're gonna limit, as Artie says.
Just the E D U to three. Three, in addition to the language that we already have, that says a maximum of.
So do you want to restate, want to restate your wording?
All that I, all that I'm suggesting is that in paragraph six C, we add at the end, after the word owner at the very end, we put comma. And occupancy of the E D U shall be limited to three persons who are not family of the.
Occupancy of the E D U shall be limited.
Or we can just say to three persons.
To three persons.
The three persons.
Three people, three people.
Yeah, good.
Yeah, that, that, yeah, that takes away the unrelated aspect of it, we're simply saying.
You're, you're, Artie, you support that?
Well, for, I mean, not exactly what I had in mind, because we're still keeping the rest of it in there, correct, we're just adding the, and that takes away from what I was thinking, is it's still saying five unrelated people total? And that could be, that means you can't, if you have three unrelated in the E D U, you can't have one and two in the main house, and I think that, and I don't think we should delve into the main house aspect of it. It would be to leave that alone, and just be, just, and just talk about the E D U, the maximum, maybe you can be more, no more than three people. No, except for you're adding it to the end of that, you're not, you're not, we're not deleting the five total unrelated.
Correct.
When I, yeah, so, so you're not, you're not deleting that, you're adding the addition, you're adding the addition, no matter when you're free in the E D U, but again, what I'm saying is, that means that no more than, if there's three unrelated in the E D U, that means it could be no more than two unrelated in the main house. Yeah, but why are we getting into the main house? Doesn't make sense to me. Let's say.
Because you can have five in the main house. You can rent out the main house, and the owner living in the E D U, and we're allowing five people, five, five people who are unrelated to the owner to be living in the main house, I've got no problem with that.
No, I am, I have no problem with that either, but I thought that this is, this is now says that total between the two, no more than five.
Yeah.
And comma, but also no more than three in the E D U.
No more than five people unrelated to the owner.
Total.
Total.
Correct.
Okay, you could have ten people who are related to the owner.
Correct, I understand that, but that's not.
Family with, with, you know, the son, the daughter-in-law, and seven kids.
No, I get that, no, I appreciate that fact, but right now, we're talking about, you know, let's forget, let's forget about the, the E D U for a second, let's forget about that. In the main house, you could have, you could have five unrelated people, you could have, you could have a certain amount of unrelated people living in the main house.
Correct.
Yeah, so why are we changing anything related to the main house? Is this, is this, this wording changes that?
We're not changing anything related to the main house, we're making an addition because we now have two units on the property.
I, I understand.
So we're adding the provision that says, because we've got two units, we're still, we're going to have a further limit that says no more than five people who are unrelated to the owner can be on the entire property.
Property, good.
The definition of family doesn't cover that, it only covers each dwelling. And we're limiting how many people can live.
Okay, so as long as we know, we're changing, as long as we know, we're changing the definition of the main house. As long as we know, is that changes the definition of what can happen in the main house, so.
Yeah.
That's, that's fine, that's fine, as long as we know that.
And I think from an enforcement perspective, this makes sense, because now I can, you know, more people are gonna complain about. And I think from an enforcement, uh, perspective, this makes sense, because now I can, you know, more people are gonna complain about how many people are in that ADU.
Yeah.
Right.
I go in there and there's six people in there, we got a problem.
Yeah.
You know, we're supposed to have three.
I appreciate that enforcement.
Because that's, you know, that's nine hundred square feet, you're putting all these people in. As opposed to a five or six bedroom house.
Exactly.
Swallow that rate up.
Yeah, exactly, good.
And it's parking also.
I'm gonna change this subject a little bit, and I'm glad Dave is here. Answer this question, and this is what's in the original bylaw, but I'm, I'm picking it up. In six H. The order of record shall be responsible for submitting an ADU application to the building commissioner. ADU and the principal dwelling units. Along with a certified site plan shall also be submitted. Do they really need to have floor plans for the entire house? That already has an.
Um, the only thing is, is if it's, if it's attached to the main house by adding another bedroom, we need to know what. Beds are in the house, because now.
Right.
It's an older house, hot wire smoke detectors are required to weld the whole house now.
Yeah.
That's building code.
Or, or subject.
So I need to know, like, how many bedrooms are in there, and this is what you have to do for that.
Okay.
Um, so.
So yes, you want the floor plans for the entire house.
And the site plan is basically, it's gonna, it's gonna address the driveway.
Yeah.
Um.
I had no problem with the site plan, I was just thinking, do they really have to spend the money? To have floor plans for the entire, you know, they're putting an ADU in the basement.
Yep.
Do they need to have floor plans for the first and second floors for you? And now you're telling me yes, because you need to look at.
Yeah, we need to address the egresses, and it's still too many egress to get in and out, or an emerged escape window or something, and then.
Right.
You know, okay, the stairway comes up into the first floor, where does it come out to, so there's a lot of these.
My question's been answered.
Or subject, right?
Asked and answered.
There's a lot of coverage.
Yeah.
Okay, so that, uh, so that takes us now on page three. Uh. Article, um, uh, item number eight A. We have, um, revised so that there can be no more than one ADU in a lot, and no more than one additional accessory building. Larger than two hundred square feet as opposed to fifty square. This is new. Through our ADU bylaw, in other words, in the original managing.
Yes.
Well, we didn't have accessory buildings, so all these, all these regulations here are new.
Yes, exactly, it doesn't.
We have decided, I think, to revise this particular provision that we had in the original advertised article, based upon, I think, Dave's recommendation at the hearing.
So Lee, one question for you, is that, does that mean that any additional accessory unit, not necessarily an ADU, can be two hundred square feet?
Yes, you could have one additional accessory building of two hundred square feet.
That's what we have now.
We had originally, um, the original square footage that we had in this was thirty fifty.
Fifty.
They pointed out that that was an older, uh, under state building code, accessory buildings can be two hundred square feet.
Uh, lining.
That's the common standard.
That makes sense.
But the policy point is, thanks Jean, the policy point was. We're allowing to have the primary house, a detached ADU. And another detached, like, garage or a small garage.
Small garage.
Yeah. Which I think is reasonable, because we're trying to keep the lawn, you know, paddy to replace to put your snowblower and a lawnmower. If you can bring your garage into an ADU, you still have an ability to put away that stuff.
Yeah, and I think.
Bikes and so on.
I think the thought is, at some point, we need to look at the accessory, uh, structure out of the bylaw.
Yes.
And maybe limit the amount of accessory structure, if, even if it isn't an ADU.
Right.
Um, so something to think about. It'll be done right now, but yeah.
Uh, Lee, we'd like you to flag that, or Alex flag that as part of our ongoing list.
Yes, it's already on the list, have we added it?
Good, thank you very much. Does anyone have any comments or opposition to that? All right, everyone's in support, already you're good?
Well, that, that particular change, yes.
Okay, great. Uh, so now comes, um. Uh, eight D, and then we have a number of, we have a couple of different alternatives. Any accessory building used as an ADU must comply with all current requirements of, uh, section four. Which are the dimensional regulations, dimensional regulations of the bylaw applicable to a principal building. In the district in which the property is located. And by, by doing that. We're allowing. For, uh, the five-foot setback. Is that right?
No. In the first one, it has to be moved back to fourteen feet.
Where the fourteen feet, the other one.
Fourteen, twelve and fourteen depending a lot, yes, yes, yes. Yep, good. And then, uh.
And the alternative would allow it to be.
That's right, or the second or.
So, I, I recommend. The five Cs. And this was obviously a policy question that we debated at some length. My, my belief, having listened. To what Dave was talking about after Oscar spent all those hours preparing those, uh, drawings. Was that, um, was that, uh. There are substantial limiting factors for a detached ADU. We have the building code that Dave identified. We also have the dimensional regulations, which, uh, uh, the dimensional regulations, and in addition to that, the economics. If you're spending a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to develop, you know, to devise. A, uh, to build an ADU, and it could be even a little more than that, uh, um. And you're getting at most three thousand dollars. You know, it's gonna take a bunch of years, you may actually sell the house before you recover the amount, so it may not be. In the economic interest to actually do that, so. I think there are substantial limiting factors at play, yet. For the person that needs it. It makes sense to allow them to be able to do that. And I, I think that's part of the public good, that we're trying to provide. And I think that's a worthy goal, and that's why I support that.
Support the or.
I support.
The second.
Yeah, in fact.
Yes.
In fact. When I've looked at ADUs, you know, in, uh, you know, in Toronto. Uh, they have laneway houses, which are at the zero setback. And the question, of course, is the impact. And the impacts haven't been seen to be adverse. So. In a scenario where we might even be. Uh, let, uh, in a non-conforming structure. On a lot that is either conforming or non-conforming, where you may, instead of being five feet, it might be three feet. To the extent, like Dave mentioned, you're gonna have to. You know, there's a lot of building code improvements that you're gonna have to do on that wall that's set within this, uh, further into the setback. But I think the rest of the structure, if it was extended out on the other way. In a lot that was otherwise, uh, confining. I think it creates that access for that homeowner. With very limited, uh, with very limited negative impact. And because it's a detached structure. Through the. Special permit process with the ZBA, like John Schneider identified. There's an opportunity for a public process. For neighbors to be able to redress any concerns they have. And for the ZBA to determine if there's any detrimental impact to the value of the properties of the neighbors. And I think that's the best of all worlds. We're talking, we're, you know, we're not talking about, uh, you know, a bunch of these units, like you'd have in a large municipality. We're talking about a couple of units. And in the vast majority of circumstances, this may not be a solution. But for the ones that need it the most. Why would we wanna deny that opportunity? I mean, that is part of the underlying principles. That Natasha and Jean have been working on with the housing plan for over a year, that we all support.
Yeah, suppose next, Mr. Chair.
I, I, I'm gonna give.
He's got something to say, I'd love to hear what he has.
I, I'm, I'm gonna give this one to Jean.
All right, um, I read again, uh, my notes and the comments that were made at our hearing. And there were fourteen comments in favor of the, uh, of what we were proposing. Um.
It was. Well, it's. Might be the fourteen.
At the excess, at the excess.
Paying proposing was that the accessory building, um, I mean, that. Uh, that you can have it five feet, in fact, some of the comments directly said, and, and I don't see why we wouldn't have the five feet. Um, and there were five comments against, uh, not against the concept of accessory dwelling units. But against the idea that there would be, uh, that could be as close as five feet, so there were. That's what, fourteen, but, but, uh, the, essentially, of the or proposition here, and five against. And two of the other speakers were simply asking questions for clarity. So I think, you know, as far as any pushback, um, I interpret the meeting and, and the hearing. To be generally in favor of what we, of what we are proposing here in the four section. Um, and I'm, I'm in favor of having.
Paul. Natasha, you have some, some thoughts?
I, I'm in favor of the or, I feel, as, as Adam had mentioned. Um, that it, that it's more equitable, um, for everyone, I think that. You, if, if, if we don't do this, you're basically like castigating the people that don't have a larger lot.
Well said. What's the point of trying to create, uh, uh, trying to diversify our housing stock? Why are we just saying we support affordable housing? Giving lip service to it, but denying the actual ability to do it?
So now I'm ready to give my thoughts.
Paul, please.
We have to recognize that we are changing. The original purpose.
Yes.
Of having ADUs. Our original purpose of having ADUs a few years ago. Was to allow elderly and disabled people. Be able to remain in their homes in the. And now expanding that. To basically use ADUs to increase our housing. I don't think there's anything wrong with that, I'm, I'm just pointing out, that that's what we do.
Yes.
We are creating. Some, some people are arguing, we're turning single-family zoning into two-family zone. By allowing ADUs all over town.
Mm-hmm.
My original thought. Which actually is a provision in what you drafted with the housing, but you got away from it. Was to be able to have a detached ADU in single residence A. And in. Rural and conservation residents, because those were, those were larger lots. I did not originally support detached ADUs. On a ten thousand square foot lot in single residence. We are now allowing. Detached ADUs all over town. And understand the arguments. I still have a problem being a next-door neighbor. Having. Residents five feet away from my property line. Especially where it's a ten thousand square foot lot, and my, and my house is gonna be, you know, fourteen. The argument that was made by Stephen Frail.
Mm-hmm.
Was that he's already using. His detached building that's only five feet from the property line as a fitness center. Basically, and I thought about that, that's great. He's not using the fitness center at three o'clock in the morning. But if you got a family living in that unit, and we're allowing rentals, rentals are not limited to elderly and disabled people.
Right.
Okay, Stephen and Heidi Frail can build an ADU and rent that unit.
Yes.
Okay, that's what we're allowing, we're adding to the housing stock, it's no longer just for. As I said, to allow people who couldn't otherwise stay in the, stay in. Town meeting needs to know that.
Yes.
I still have a problem with. Having three college students. Who might be partying until two, three o'clock in the morning, being five feet from the property line in a single residence B. Unit.
Yep.
I think that we are imposing, um. Problems for the next-door neighbors, and that's why I was in favor of.
So I'd like.
I think, no, I think, no, no, I, no, I, no, I think, no, 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 no. Okay, no, 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 it shouldn't be, someone speaks, the chair speaks, someone speaks, the chair speaks, that isn't how it's supposed to happen. Okay, in, in, in committees, boards in town, that's not how it happens.
Well.
I've been, I've been, I've been plenty, I've been plenty of them around town. But. I agree. With whatever we can do. Is, I mean, my father grew up in town, and my grandmother had a. Not, not really an ADU on top of her house, top of her garage on Lawton Road, we call it the pine room. You, you walk into it, it's kind of one level hat, kind of a sink, you walk down to the bedroom area, but it wasn't an ADU, but still, it was great to have. And it would, maybe it would be nice to have an, as an more official ADU, I suppose, it would have been, I'm sure. Um. What we are fundamentally doing here is changing the whole town. When you're changing the whole town, you need to really vet what you're changing. Okay, one meeting, and then this is not against the opponents, okay, I know most of them. One meeting where the opponents are loading it up with their, the people that, they, that are in favor of it, because they've called, they, they, they. They, they, whatever the phrase is, getting their vote, getting the people in there, and I get it, I understand why they did that. But this is a fundamental change to the whole town, we are not supposed to be sending. Anything to town meeting, which is a gross, which is a fundamental change to the whole town. Without actually fully vetting it. This has not been fully vetting, vetted, this has been, let's have a meeting, let's take a presentation designed by the opponents. Presented to the town from the planning board, which I didn't know about. Okay, which in my opinion was missing a scenario. And, and I don't, I don't consider that vetting, I, I am in favor of doing something. I mean, five, four or five years ago, I thought it was too limiting. I thought the definition was too limiting, why, why did we do that? I mean, we were, we were probably three minutes away from expanding the definition, all of a sudden, you know. You know, conversation closed, let's vote on it, they find that happened. But now, and now we, you know, we've gone through time, we're getting to this point now where. We knew something was gonna change, we knew the, we knew the definition was gonna change, that is no surprise at all to me. So we knew something was gonna change. But we've gone from what it was. To changing it to make it more equitable, and it was equitable in this particular case of trust, who can be there? To something which is now completely different than what it, what it originally was. And. And we've taken that in one, in one hour and a half segment of a conversation at a meeting three weeks ago. To have, to totally changing what the zoning is on the one. Probably changing what the definitions of the zoning is in the town, of what it is. Is it, is it technically changing it, uh, from single-family to multi-family? No, it's not technically doing that. But it, but it is, is, is essentially doing that, because now they're rentable units. Five feet from the property line. No question, there can be plenty of times when that could be perfectly fine. That'll be, it'll be perfectly fine by the neighbors. Um, and no one can complain, they'll live there, and we'll be happy and so forth. But if I moved into a single-family neighborhood. And I'm one of these situations where I have a detached garage. And neighbor behind me has a house with a detached garage, if I moved into that single-family neighborhood, which it is. And then all of a sudden I realized, damn, this isn't a single, this isn't what I thought. There's actually an apartment right there, literally five feet behind my garage, right there. And I didn't know that, and there's no reason why I would know that. Is this a single-family neighborhood? We have not had the conversation, we have not vetted this, we have not had the conversation as, or. What are the safeguards in place? What do people really feel about it in that home that's whole town? And us stating that, well, it was open to the public. Okay, you know, we, we put a notice out there, open to the public. Well, I mean, we know that. I think a lot, I think all of us has some experience that. When we put it out to the public, a lot of people don't necessarily know what's going on, because a lot of times, they only hear the positive things. We're expanding, we're expanding it so people, you know, so, so more people can live within the household and ADU, that's what they're hearing a lot of times. They're not hearing the other aspect of it. Is that's not what people wanna tell them sometimes, whether they wanna. They wanna, they wanna, and I get this, and they wanna show examples of why it makes no sense that it can't be, the way it should be allowed. And, and I get that, they'll show situations where the houses are being expanded to the point where it's absurd. I mean, I, I, people know how I feel about large-sized houses and pro, and lots, they get ridiculous in size. In some, in certain many cases, they can be more, more intrusive. Than, um, than ADU, and you know, a separate ADU, and I get that. And I, and I, it would be nice to have somebody to limit that. But this is, this is, does not have the. But this is, this is, does not have the vetting, is not the way to do that. Too deep to eliminate that possibility of a house way too big.
Are you, are you, is this all going?
This is all going to, this is all going to the direction of. I do, I, I do not approve, I do not approve the detached structures because they have not been vetted. It changes the whole thing.
I, I just want to make sure we understand what, what your position is.
I, I'm just gonna ask already a clarifying question. But already to your point, you just, Jean just asked you. That whether you would support for the, um, the D which, uh, to the principal. Building setback, which would be twelve or fourteen feet, but it's just before you got up. You actually said, that's why you don't support, I think, detached structures.
Yeah, that's where I was gonna go.
I just wanna ask, I just wanna ask already a question. Regardless of, of the setback. Do you support a detached ADU?
No, I do not support detached structures because.
Yeah.
I have gotten calls, I've spoken people.
Yep.
Um, who are opposed to attached ADUs. I am fully expecting that on the floor of town, if, if we send the Warren article with detached ADUs. I'm fully expecting that there was going to be a motion on the floor of town meeting. Remove all the language about having detached ADUs. It's gonna be a lively discussion.
Yeah. I agree.
What the people. The detached ADUs happens to be watching on Zoom, and I just got a text from that person saying I agree with that. So, they're, they're, they're town meeting members. Um, we're in a fascinating scenario now because they've changed the law, so. Um, we, we don't have, we don't have a two thirds voting required.
Right.
Uh, and I, and I contacted Chrissy to make sure that, um. This is gonna be a majority vote because it's housing.
Oh, jeez.
This is gonna be a majority.
I didn't, I, I kind of heard, I kind of heard it.
So what we're gonna have is, we're gonna have a debate on the floor of town meeting about detached ADUs. Whether it passes or not will be by majority vote, which is what we have for amendments to. And then whatever winds up passing there, whether it's with detached or without detached. It can pass with a majority vote. So it's gonna be an interesting situation.
Natasha?
So I have a quick question. Right now it's saying that any detached is by right.
Yes.
No, 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 any detached.
By special.
It was by special permit.
Okay, I just wanted to confirm that, because I.
It's in the main house, it's by right.
Because I, I want people to understand that, that it's not like it's by right.
Special, yeah.
For detached, it's a special permit, it's, it's, it's right, because it would be one by one that it would be vetted. So just a couple of comments, the, um. Paul, I, I understand completely what you're saying. Um, but you mentioned two family, that it essentially becomes a two family. Is a two family restricted to the nine hundred square feet? Uh, on, and the rest of the town?
No.
Right, so it's not really a two family, it's really its own thing. I just wanted to just confirm that people. It's not like you're putting two families with the same amount of space or anything, it's, it's, it's a hybrid, right?
I just got another person who has my phone number. Sent me a text saying I agree with Artie.
So look, it's.
Can I just finish really quick? The other thing that we did already is that during the housing plan, which took a year. We talked about ADUs many, you know, several times and the, and, um, Jean, you're aware of that, right? I mean, we didn't talk specifics like this, but we talked about these ADUs a lot, and they were public meetings and there were so. Even though we didn't have, we didn't vet this group, didn't vet it, there were different groups that came and talked to us and told us that that was something that they were interested in. So I just wanted to clarify that, that it's not like we've never spoken about it the whole, for an entire year. We were talking about it and there was a plan and we got comments back and all of that, so. Granted, this group didn't as much, but that group did, so.
No, no, I can, I can appreciate that, and you know, talk about ADUs, and again, again, it was very clear that even four years ago, it's clear that. That, that restriction was, was too restrictive, we need to do something about it. So the conversations went, or an ADUs, you know, within the housing working, and that's appreciated. Um, you know, related to special permits. Um, special permits sound like they're the safeguard to everything, they're not.
Okay, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, he's, he is not finished yet.
No, I am, that's fine. I appreciate it.
I think we've discussed this enough. I think we should vote on which of these provisions for paragraph D. Should be inserted in the law.
I would, um, understand that, and we'll come to the vote in a, in a minute. Appreciate the robust debate, Artie, I think, you know, you certainly have articulated. Um, a lot of the concerns that I've been hearing, you know, I've been receiving phone calls and I've been. Making phone calls and I've been having meetings with a number of our constituents and as Paul's continuing to receive. Um, uh, oh, you know what, we actually might lose our, uh, building commissioners on it.
Natasha, didn't, didn't, you have to leave it ten?
Yeah, I need to leave it ten.
So.
And I can stay for a few minutes. Yeah.
I just, I'm commenting, I may, so just may put it easy that five foot setback. So a few years ago, the town adopted the stretch energy code. We're now into a, a specialized stretch energy code. These buildings have to meet that requirement. There's gonna be very few standing garages that can be converted into an ADU and. Red code requirements. There's all kinds of issues with that. Most of these buildings, and I'd say ninety-five percent of them would have to be demolished and then moved to a setback. Um, of, of the primary structure. I don't.
If we pass, if we pass the second one, because the first one, they can build it five.
Yeah, they can build it five feet from the property.
Right, which I'm not in agreement with, uh, for an ADU, but again, I'm just saying that. Converting a garage in twenty view is not just taking the door off and slapping out an empty door and a window in the front and then converting it. You is a lot more than that, so, um, it's going to, once you demolish it.
Yes.
Now that's a major alterations guy.
Right. I, that's why I was saying, you know, it's that the building codes, you know, are a lim, a substantial limiting factor. I will. I will say a couple of things, and Natasha, if we're exceeded, you can call in on Zoom on your way. So.
Maybe we should have the voting person, we should have the voting person.
I think we're getting ready to vote, because I think it's a big lady.
I just, I understand, like, yeah. I should come to that in a minute. I just, everyone's had a chance, you know, has had a chance to speak, and I just want to say that. You know, it's clear that, that there is, um, that. We want to, uh, we want to improve access to ADUs. A necessary part of that, if we're gonna do it to the extent of, of, we want to achieve the goals. That we aspire to when we passed that, uh, housing plan working group. Change, substantial changes are needed. I understand the two family argument, as I was saying, I've received a number of comments, but I've received comments from people. Who, who recognize that, um, you know, who recognize the, the value in being able to rent out a unit. And to have it as a detached structure, and I, we've all heard from people that oppose it. I think what we should do, and I wish that what we had done was created two articles. One that was specifically for attached and another was detached, and in hindsight, twenty twenty, we should have done that. But I think that the town should, to Artie's point, the town should have that discussion. As a legislative body.
Oh, they will.
Well, 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 we're the, we're the, we're the first ones that are supposed to decide if it's been vetted. We're not supposed to pass just anything to town and say, you vet it, we have to vet it first.
What's unvetted for you, Artie?
What I said, what's unvetted is the fact that it's a major change to the whole town, that's when it is clear that is.
What specifically has been unvetted?
The fact that detached structures creates a major zoning change within the whole town.
I think, I think those points have been made by you and by Artie.
You like the move.
I don't need to, you know, and so I think we need to vote, you know, it's not really a motion, I don't think we need one. Do you want the first paragraph D or the second paragraph D to be inserted into the line?
I want to go to Jean, because she had a, she had a comment.
Well, that goes to, um, section S, no. I just didn't want.
So.
It flows everything before. Okay, let's go back to D.
Okay, so with respect to D, um. I, I would, I would propose that we do the initial paragraph of D.
Yeah, then. Let's just vote either.
Exactly.
Either the initial paragraph or the second paragraph.
Okay, so all.
Initial paragraph is the one after the or. Is that what you mean?
No, no.
The initial paragraph is that it's with, um, that, that it's, um.
Applicable to a principal dwelling, so what, what have to be that.
Fourteen feet, and the second one is it can be five feet.
Yes. That's what I thought.
And a pre-existing non-conforming.
And Paul, I would agree that, and I would agree that larger, larger lots make it easier to deal with it.
Yeah, but we're not dealing.
We're not dealing with that, we're not, we're not dealing with that right now.
That's.
So, all, so, let's, so all in favor of, uh, of the initial paragraph.
I got, I got confused by those phrase, initial.
Okay. The one, the one that's, that's next to D.
D, that's, that's the first.
So that was.
No matter, no matter what.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
All in favor.
Okay, let me just ask a question, so if, if somebody has a lot that doesn't, um. If they have the, the garage, let's say, that you have to rebuild anyway or whatever, or the partial or whatever it is, where you have to insulate more or something to that effect. They, that's the five feet.
No.
No, this is the twelve.
No, no, the second one, the second.
The second.
But, but, so I understand if there's a non-conforming, but if there's, if, if, if you build new, you can still build at the five feet?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes. Yeah. Any, any new structure fifteen feet high, five foot drop in line.
Is there a way of, of saying if there's a non-conforming structure already that you can do that, but if it's a new structure? It has to be the twelve to fourteen feet?
I don't know that you can.
But five, but, but that's.
Yeah, I had a problem with that because, be, because I could see the scenario. Where you say, well, okay, I'm gonna build a new garage, let it sit there for two and a half years or three years.
Sure.
Now I have a non-conforming in five feet and I'm gonna convert it to the ADU. Where the initial purpose altogether was, I need to, I need to build a new structure. Uh, but, but it has to be pre-existing in order for me to convert it to an ADU, so what's pre-existing from when I build it?
And the whole point is.
It becomes unwilling.
Yeah.
But the.
Yes, it does.
Pre-existing on the day that we pass this amendment, I, I don't think that's fair to the town. We either allow five feet or we require fourteen.
Exactly, yeah.
So if someone has a garage, let's say, Steve Frail and Heidi Frail, and they would like to build an ADU. In that garage, could they still do it by special permit, or they wouldn't be able to?
Well, they would only.
Depends on which we pass.
It's detached, so they would have to do it by a special.
They'd have to do it twelve or fourteen feet back, they'd still have the special permit.
Yes.
Correct.
Regardless, this, the set, the.
It, I just want to make sure that.
Yeah, the special permit requirement exists for, uh, for a detached structure.
No matter.
Regardless of the setback.
Right.
But I think you're saying that that building right now is at five feet and they wanted to convert it to an ADU.
Right.
That they could not do that.
Right.
If we pass.
Right.
If you pass the, the one next to D, so that, that's my issue, that they couldn't do it, and that's unfair to them.
That's why, that's why we're gonna take the vote.
Okay.
Really effectively to take it to town meeting for town meeting to happen.
That's, that's kind of where the special permit plays, plays here, because let's say if the. Their accessory building is five feet from the law line.
Right.
And there's nothing in the backyard of a neighbor's property. You know, in that particular case, the special permit may, may allow that, because it, it doesn't infringe on anybody's, you know. Um, if we pass the second alternative.
If you pass the second alternative.
Yeah, you pass the second.
But if you pass the first one, they have no chance of having an AD.
Right, so again, the special permit allows specialty cases.
Correct.
To be heard, and then if the neighbors come out against it or whatever, then so be it.
Right.
So now you're in favor of, probably, five feet, because they're going to the special permit. I would never against it not being at five feet, it's just that there's a lot of implications that, that, that.
But yeah, I mean, it's still the fact that if, if one, if, if one neighbor says yes, then the house gets sold and someone moves in, it's like, it's still, it looks like a garage. Also, it's not a garage.
Okay, but let's talk about to leave, I apologize.
Yeah, so, um, uh, okay, so. All in favor, let's say it this way, all in favor, I guess, of the, uh, of the, uh, first alternative.
Which requires to move that to fourteen feet.
Four, twelve feet as a result of the setback relating to the primary structure.
It's a hand, a hand raise.
A hand raised.
Oh, always were in favor.
In favor of.
I think you're, you're raising your hand. The, the first one, the first one.
Uh, yeah, I'll go, I'll go for that one.
And then, uh, all in favor of the accessory structure setback, which would be five feet.
Read it, you love, okay. Uh, another change.
Lee, are you clear?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you all.
We have been moving on to F.
Yes, we had E, I want to make sure that, uh, there's no, no one has any objection to E.
I'm sorry.
Artie? A residential lot, a block, a long, and one was exactly the minimum lot area and/or minimum frontage may contain an accessory. Building used as an ADU, provided such ADU implies with section D above. Okay, good, now to F. Uh, no one else has any comments on E? All right, F.
Yes, um, as, as currently worded, um, I thought that, that was ambiguous, uh, it says, uh, any. Any basement in an accessory building with an ADU shall count toward the maximum allowable. So that theoretically you could have an accessory structure with an ADU on the second floor. Um. And if it had a basement, that basement would count even if it wasn't used for an ADU.
Correct.
And I don't think we intend that.
Correct.
It's only if the basement area is used for an ADU that are going to count it. So I propose, um, if, if, they're having it say in the second line. For purposes of this section, any basement area used for an ADU in an accessory building. Shall count toward the maximum allowable nine hundred square feet of building.
But, and, and I think that's a, a good clarification, but I think.
So my concern about that was finished basement.
Yes.
Not, not a basement for utilities.
Correct.
So I, I think it should be finished basement or habitable basement.
Right.
Then it should be counted towards the ADU, because it's, it's living damage.
Yes, exactly right.
It's not, then.
Exactly, yeah, I agree.
So I, and then Lee also, this says any basement in the accessory building, but if you. I'm not sure how many accessory buildings would have a basement, isn't it the?
This is, this is any basement in an accessory building with an ADU. So you've got the garage, okay, you're adding on to the garage, the second floor, onto, onto, onto the garage. And now the question is, on the first floor. You're gonna keep it as a garage, you're gonna keep it just as storage, doesn't count towards the nine hundred square feet, but if you're gonna finish it so that it's habitable. Then it should count towards the.
Right, the first floor is not a basement.
Correct. Correct, I think what we were talking about is that the building gets knocked down and they put a foundation in for an ADU. And then it's a one-story ADU above it with a foundation down below, that, that, if that, that basement in that case was finished. Then it would count towards the ADU.
Right, if not, they'd get additional space.
If it's not, and it's just used for utilities, your hallway, your, your front. So how about if we make it, purposes of this section, any furnished karma habitable basement?
Be finished or finished?
Karma habitable basement in an accessory building with an ADU shall count towards.
I don't know if we need habitable.
Yeah, do we need habitable?
Just finished.
Just finished.
Yeah, just finished.
Yeah.
Supposedly it's a basement that has no windows, that's on that.
Well.
And it's finished.
But it's livable, I mean.
So habitable and finished.
The way you have it, finish everything, so, so all right, so you are intending to vote farther than I thought you were. Um, and Paul, I think has stuck the words correct to address your issue. Um, and Paul, I think has stuck the words correct to address your issues. Um, so I take back. My more limiting language. Um, and, and so we're talking about. For purposes of this section, any finished habitable basement in an accessory building with an ADU.
Yes.
I'm good with that change.
Okay, so I just, I just wanna be clear. So if someone has a basement now. And let's say the house is a thousand square feet on the first floor, a thousand square feet on the second floor. There is a thousand square feet in the, in the basement and the, and the, there was an attic that's unfinished. Now they're going to, now they're. I know that, but my question specifically is with respect to the primary. Shall we equally count the finished habitable ADU nine hundred square foot? Because right now. The town did not count as part of the floor area ratio. A finished basement or a finished third floor.
I don't, I don't think we need to change it. I don't think we need to go there. Now we're getting way too complicated, too many changes. We have the primary residence. I don't think we should be making any changes to the language we have. If you're putting an ADU on a primary residence, I'm fine with the, what we've got.
Yeah, and you don't know how.
Yeah, because you're gonna have a finished basement, you know, you, you, you have a finished basement for the whole, for the whole house, for the whole family. It's got nothing to do with the ADU.
No, that's where the ADU is.
The ADU can be on the second floor, the ADU can be in the attic. You have a finished basement in, in the house. You already have a finished basement in, in the house. You're creating a, a nine hundred square foot ADU. In the, in, in the attic or on the second floor, what difference does it make that the basement is finished?
Just the treatment of the floor area ratio, but okay, I wanted to raise it. I've raised it. It's clear the will of the board, so we'll move forward with all language between finished and habitable. Are you, it's not.
I, I think it's, I think we really need to move on.
So I think I, I agree with the changes that. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But Jean proposed or that Paul proposed?
The Paul proposed.
Okay.
So, Lee, you have that change?
Finished habitable. I'm going to insert one before the third basement, that's all. Yes, I have it.
Okay, so Chair, I will, and I'm gonna separate this, okay? I'm not, I'm not going to include the recommendation in my initial. I move that we send article two with the changes as drafted and with the changes that we made today. To the Warren Committee for inclusion in the May town meeting, the annual town meeting morning.
We have a motion by Paul, do we have a second?
Second.
A second by Natasha, any discussion?
Well, we're talking about sending the article as written with the changes.
Yeah, just sending it so that, that, that's how it will appear in the.
I, okay, I, I vote no, okay, okay.
So all in favor?
I.
I, all opposed?
No.
So for the record, we have a four one on sending the uh, ADU bylaw as revised today.
Okay, Lee, do we absolutely need to vote today whether to recommend or can we wait until? Later before town meeting, you know, town meeting starts for another month and a half.
Yes, you, you can wait.
Get our recommendations so that we can think about that some more. On our vote recommendation. And I see things from the Finance Committee and from the Select Board recommendation to be in a headed town meeting.
To that point, uh, to that point, Lee, I had an opportunity to speak with uh, the Chair of FinCom. And it would be helpful that we are able to provide, either by you or by Karen. Some estimation of what we would anticipate for the construction of new ADUs as a result of the bylaw change. That's one of the impacts.
I mean, over the, over the course of the, I think the last three years since it's been adopted, we've had twelve units.
So, I believe, I understand.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you very much, Natasha. I just, we'll talk offline about that, but we. Our interest to do that now.
And we've lost a person voting on whether to make a recommendation or not. I still would like to defer making a recommendation.
Well, does anyone else, would anyone like to make a recommend, uh, a, a motion to recommend our position on the article?
Uh, I, um, I, I move that we um, recommend to town meeting. Uh, the adoption of all four articles that are before us.
Yes, yes.
Um, I vote that we, uh, I, I move that we vote to recommend to town meeting. The adoption of Article Two uh, with the changes that we made uh, at this meeting.
We have a motion by Jean, do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Natasha, uh, any discussion? Hearing now, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, please signify by saying nay.
Nay.
I abstain because um, because I am torn about including attached. Dwellings, and so I'm not gonna vote no, but I'm not gonna vote yes.
So for the record, we have uh, three in favor, one opposed and one abstention, and the abstention was noted. Uh, as Paul just mentioned. Thank you all very much on that item. We're not done yet, but Natasha.
Okay.
Um, uh, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take it easy first.
I won't.
So next up on our agenda, um.
There was one piece of correspondence that came in before the hearing closed last Tuesday.
Yes.
So you should read that into the record before um.
So, so I, I'm trying to find, um, I made a note of the correspondence that we had. Uh.
And we all.
There was, yes, there was, I think there was three.
There were a couple others that came in, they're under general correspondence, because they, they came in after the hearing was closed, but there's still correspondence.
But I couldn't identify in our package today which was which.
Um, it depends on when they came in. So the first one that came in was during the hearing. Do you want me to tell you what they were? Um, sure. Um, the one that was during the hearing, uh, when it was still ongoing was came in on March seventh at ten seventeen, and that was from Stephen Frail. The two others that are general correspondence, um, but related to this are Katie Durk.
Yes.
And Teresa Holmes.
Thank you very much, right? Uh, thank you very much. So that's the correspondence. Is there any other report, Lee, that you have or Alex?
I know, I have nothing to add.
Okay, uh, Artie, do you have anything to report?
No, no.
Uh, all of you, any report? Uh, Jean?
No.
Okay, uh, just.
Real quick, I will be contacting you later today, um, hopefully to try to schedule an executive session meeting. We're hoping to get our calendars out right now, but we haven't heard from Jay about. So, um, just look for that email from me and we'll try to schedule this.
Um, excuse me, um, I see the note I made to myself. It has to do with, um. Um, the. Examination of the article, not with the article itself.
Provide that to, uh, to the.
And it has to do, let me just tell you, it, it says nothing about the, about building commissioner. Uh, having the option of referring uh, the que, the question about. You, to the design review board. There's nothing about that.
I'll add it, I'll add it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jean. Um. I think with that, so yeah, so we, and that may be next week for the executive session.
Swing it.
Yeah.
With the notice appointment and whatnot.
Right. And uh, they're probably.
No, I'll email you all. I had hoped to, but um, it doesn't make sense.
So.
So, so, so I assume that the bill is not passed yet to extend?
Um, no, the, the bill, um, I think the bill passed the House, the bill's passed the Senate. Um, but the bill in which um, this, these extensions are embedded is currently in committee, um. And so it's hoped that it's going to uh, make it through the process and have a governor's signature. Um, before the um, law expires at the end of the month, but there is always that possibility that. Um, you know, it won't happen for maybe, you know, a week late, so um, that's where we are.
Yeah, with attorney telling them before the end of them.
Right, yes. Uh, which is what I was gonna propose, but we do that one by zip. All right, uh, anything else?
No.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion to adjourn, please?
So move.
A motion, uh, uh, a second, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll come to the vote, all in favors. I signify by saying aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
All opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much.